I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local law members?
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Trustee Chong, Lakeham. Trustee Martin?
Here.
Trustee Southwood?
Here.
Trustee Garrett is excused tonight.
Okay, we need to approve the minutes of the May 14th, May 18th, and May 31st meetings. Does anybody have any additions or corrections? We've got a entertaining motion to accept the minutes, correct?
Still move.
Second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All holds, motion is carried. Now, presentation, petitions, communications, and notices. I guess at this time we'll do our public hearing on local law two. No, that's not seven. We left late and seven. Do you have a report from Mike T. Cho, Colts Officer?
Um, there's not a whole lot new. I've been going around looking at properties, property maintenance issues, sent a couple letters out for grass. What I ran into was there's a company out of California that's bought one property in the village here. And I don't know how I'm going to be able to enforce a, you know, a big grass cut. I mean, these companies buy up vacant land for little to nothing just to hold it in hope of selling at a later date. Yeah, I will send them a letter, but I don't know how we're going to get them to do it. The Lusen Hall property, I've been talking with the county treasurer, Mr. Joe Drew. And he asked, I asked the board if they wouldn't consider cutting the grass down there and picking up the junk and submitting a bill to the county. That way there, that'll be attached to the, on the tax sale. Otherwise, if they put it out, or if they hire a private contractor to do it, it's not reimbursable. So the taxpayers get stuck with it. This way here, if the villagers cuts it and puts the bill in, when the property goes up for the tax sale, you can get it repaid at that time. Takes a while, but... So he asked about that, and I said, "Oh, I'll bring it up." Someone did cut half the grass in the front, but the other half is, I hate it right now. So, some directions and what you want me to do with that. Dennis Richards Building, I'm still trying to get ahold of him. He was supposed to have an answer for me in May as to what he's going to do with that. Either he has to put a roof on it, secure it, or tear it down. Let's see, we have some correspondence back on Patterson Building. Board will take action on that, I hope. Other than that, that's about it. No new housing is being built. Two small projects, but that's about it.
Any questions for me?
Well, I have one other thing. And Steve, we're big, may I touch on that? Shared services meeting, we talked about the enforcement issue. You guys going to talk about that?
We have something on the agenda.
Okay. That was it?
And Kate, thanks, man. Mayor's report. Originally, we had planned on scheduling a hearing to oppose the annexation of NCCS into the Village of Champlain, but we found that we were not compliant with the time notification. So we're planning on something in August. We will have a date in the next couple of weeks, and we will schedule it for then. We're working on a cross-connection law to comply with Department of Health Director. And he has received the grant to cover matching funds under the shared services grant. Trustee Chong, would you like your report?
Uh, not a lot going on right now. Just looking away on the franchise, cable franchise agreement that Greg and I are going to get together and just basically start going through it page by page. And we'll meet again with the town and have those two ladies come up and help me again. I'm sure we'll end up doing an extension. It's due in August, I doubt it, but I want us to summer schedule it.
Thank you, Kim. Trustee Martin?
Yes, like you said, we had a meeting on September June. We haven't got a contract bid from the Department of State for our grant. As the mayor mentioned, we did receive a contract for matching funds of $30,000, $10,000 each per, for each municipality. Our next meeting, July 11th, is in Rousas Point. Republic is invited to attend. I'd like to congratulate Tim Andres on the completion of his course developing a cross-connection control program. It's encouraging to see the village employees taking advantage of the opportunities available to further their education and the workings of the village infrastructure. And finally, the flower boxes along the village streets look really nice. I'd like to thank everybody who helped place them, helped plant the flowers in the box. It's a welcome issue for the streets of our village. And that's all.
Okay. Trustee Southwood?
Just have a mention on the planning boards. There hasn't been any activities with regard to that. That's really all I have. Just a few businesses, nobody's done anything.
Okay. Another report, the former treasurer?
I've been happy with the last month, Austin Crystal Year, May 31st, 2007.
We had no accounts from... Some accounts from the red.
None.
Okay, at this time, we would, I'm going to pay a motion to pay the warrant.
Go on.
Second? Any discussion? Not, uh, Trustee Chongly?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Motion is carried. Now, the report is superintendent's?
Five minutes. Uh, just for a brief, a few major projects we have. Item of discussion, road on Prospect, you know, discuss that. We're going to start working on it end of July, then we should update in August. That road, top and bottom, completely reconstructed as far as I can. Other items, Muffin Monster down in the wastewater plant. It's a unit that is essential to the processing of sludge as it enters the system. I would like us to move forward with this term of it. It's about $12,000 unit. It's a grinder that takes care of all the stuff that comes in. We... I mean, like to purchase this item is just a future problem for the rest of the project. It's just, it's right down. Boat launch, I have a contractor, D and D paving, and it's willing to complete the job within our budget for the grant money that we have left over. And it will be completed in the month of June. It's just great for confirmation of me to say that he is the contractor. What company is that, D and D paving? Best thing for the book. Uniform items. I have worked with UniFirst. And the deal with UniFirst is, is when you sign the contract with UniFirst, you sign a five-year contract. We have eighteen months left in that contract, and if we chose to walk away from that contract, I mean, the cost, thirteen, hundred dollars, something in the line of... And then the cost to start up a whole new contract with another contract. My suggestion is, is that we stay with UniFirst, draw up a new contract to cover all five of our workers, to include myself. Apparently, there's only three people on that contract. Andres, Lynn Court, and...
Sir.
Sir, out there. Those three guys are the only ones that will be paid for UniFirst. The new contract with that, myself, and Mr. Crystal. It's a little more expensive every week. But we moved from the pants that they have now to a denim camp and a polo shirt with a village crest. The logo that we have on our building is circles and village champagne. UniFirst is waiting for approval on that, and we can put that into action. I will not put this into action until you guys have a chance to look at the crest that we'll have in Florida, if we choose to do that, to get your approval and say, "Yes, that's what we want created." Once that's completed, then we're going to that smartest all around market. And one other big item is the Gulf Filter Press, another wastewater plant item. Currently, it's a $20,000 upfront cost to purchase the unit and put it in there, if it's the unit that we want. However, over its lifetime, its tenure, during its tenure, they'll say it's a lot more money than shipping fees at the dump. No longer will be purchasing bags. Man hours are cut right in half. Rousas Point has double the amount of wastewater coming into their plant, and they use their Gulf Filter Press once a week. So without, ours is half the plant, so we would use it once a week, or once every week. We can halve, which then, you know, cuts down on the man hours, which allows Mr. Crystal to maintain Muffin Monster. That's really about the big two guys. However, I'd like to say, the cross-connection program. The Village of Champlain is currently the only water municipality that has anything on the boards for Clinton County Health Department. We are recognized as the only unit that has anything in writing. Waiting for approval through that, which is a great thing for the Village of Champlain. And I really think that the village owes that, for the most part, to Mr. Crystal. He was the one that generated it. He got a lot of help from other entities, you know, other states actually, that we plagiarized and cut copies of. But in the end, for me as the village as a whole, we're looking really good to all the districts. And we are going to use as a model in the future to keep them. And that's really what Mr. Crystal's saying, they can't take really... Who knows that? That's really about it? Now, if you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. I'll move on. Most time. Now, our lead correspondents?
Correspondents from the American Leisure Press and Commission Self-Hopping, the week of May 25th to 27th, 2007. 2007, in Village Response. Correspondents from Clinton County Planning Department regarding the National Flood Insurance Program Regulations Amendment. Letter to Beverly Grace regarding the grass on the Main Street property. Correspondents from Attorney Marshall regarding the Patterson property. Correspondents from Secretary City regarding our water, $30,000, which is under the Little Park. Correspondents from Dunk Fairies regarding water line repair under Route 9, bridge damage from flooding. Correspondents from Clinton County Health Department regarding revised water sampling requirements. Correspondents from County Champlain regarding cross-connection control law. Correspondents from Real Property Tax Service Divising that property at 59 Oak Street is owned by the county and is, and the tax was snapped. Thank you, letter from Carl Smith with help with flood removal. Thank you, letter to Mayor George Rivers for use of the prevent manpower street to street. Thank you, letter to Jan McFetris and Clark Purvis and students regarding their participation in the local and national youth service day. Letter for the New York Rural Water Association.
Other old business, a type 10 cable franchise, can you report on that or go to report? Charity issue is what, new, made or less, is what you knew? Do I see a weird, is what you knew? Does anyone else have any old business? I thought we moved to new business. Do you have a letter from Dave Marshall that you would like to send as the next step from that building downtown, or what the group is paving in on, to a new, new next step? So, entertaining motion authorizing Patterson Building being treated as unsafe, as an unsafe and dangerous building? So many. Second? Is there any discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All holds, motion is carried. Second, your second piece of business is replacement of sewer plant Muffin Monster. I believe that's going to cost, what do you? I mean, I bought the purchase order.
I have $11,775. And we get a, that's including the shipping and handling from that organization to us. Once we receive it, then we return the core for a $2,000 core charge. Plus, we have to take the shipping and handling with the return core. We need to put this off a bit, we have about $10,000 down.
Uh, we can't because it's, it's a unit, a system.
There's no one else of eight seats.
So, and this is a rebuild, I believe.
It's a reman, this price is for a reman.
So, a new one would probably about $40,000, I believe. So, this is probably the best way to go. It's something we need to park in 2016. So, net cost on this, well... Is that... What's the net cost on this unit?
The net cost minus shipping and handling, it's 7, 11, 775.
All right, yes, the total.
That's our total cost. And then, once we return our unit, we get a $2,000 check return.
Okay, then that'll come out. Okay. While entertaining motion to, to carry, will we build Muffin Monster, the item?
Can we cut one?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All holds, motion is carried. Just the announcement, the images of the America Champlain book that Selene had done. Greg Fleming donated a copy to the village. At this time, Stephen, the insurance committee, and Kim, have a recommendation to pay the on Prospect Street?
With Ian South and Kim's and my consultation, I guess you could say, we've come up with a decision on, you know, what we're going to do on top and bottom of Prospect Street. It's going to have two phases. It'll be a multiplication done by Gorman Group, is that correct? For $7,500?
Yes, reclamation of $7,500 for the Gorman Group. That'd be phase one.
That happened approximately July 15th.
From the 15th to the 1st of July, would be the timeframe.
First of August.
Exactly.
Anything?
First of July.
Sorry?
And then the second piece of it is under state contract, they have to pay approximately August 1st.
The first week of August, the end of the year. And those dates are tentative depending on weather for Clinton County. They may get stuck in, across the small, they don't brush the moors or somewhere else, or an extra day or two days. You can see how to, we step on that. First of August, for payment.
Okay, Stephen, you'd like to make a motion in regards to which, pardon, which bids we're going to go with?
I'd like to make a motion and recommend that we, Gorman Group, the reclamation process, the cost of $7,500. And then, the county, you know, do the second phase, pay, for paying per contract bid per ton.
Per ton.
You don't really, you don't want to make that one involved, or do you?
Yes. It'll be approximately $25,000 for the asphalt. There is, it's $48 a ton. It's $14,000 for the first type of asphalt. And then, the binder course, two phases again. And then, $7,000 roughly for the top coat, that $52 a ton. That, that, that price may swell a little due to, when you get down to the bottom of Prospect, we have to fan it out. So, it's more... It's wider for the exit, I guess, the entrance to the street, where people are coming in on the apron. This would be a better way to go. So, that right now. And the bid is set, those prices right here that I have for the ton of asphalt is state contract. Uh, Gorman Group's state contract prices, and the asphalt is at state prices. So, if fuel costs rise, the asphalt costs will not rise. If you were to person drive it.
Kate, do you have that motion, and Stephen, do you have that?
Uh, recommend Gorman Group for the reclamation at $7,500, and the county for paving per contract bid per ton. Correct?
Correct. Okay, the second? Any discussion? Trustee Chongly?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. We also have, Steve, do you have a recommendation on vehicles that I've been looking on that right here?
I've been working with Ian again a little bit on state contract pricing for a vehicle. As you know, our van died a while back, and we haven't really had anything to back that up with. We've been using that four-wheel drive for everything. Really, we should try to cut back on the use of that gas mileage, and also, you know, just to save the economy and what it's meant for. So, what I've done is contacted the local dealer to get state contract pricing on, it's called an eco-knots. And waiting for those numbers to come in. Also, they have available, they used heavy-duty car, they'll be end, Ian and I are going to look at. And they recommend initially on board next month that we can cure that cost of $1,000, and make it affordable.
Could you make a motion to approve the quotes on the eco-knots?
Yes.
We have to get quotes for that.
Yes.
Yes, because that's over $10,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All holds, motion is carried. We would also need to have a motion for D and D paving to complete parking area in River Street Park. Someone might be making a motion at, what does that, $1,700?
Uh, $1,900.
I mean, promotion that D and D paving do, you know, Kim, that fricking lot, that boat launch, have prices of $1,900?
Second? Any discussion?
Just like I mentioned, that's, that's part of the grant, that finishes up the grant, I'm correct?
Yeah.
Maybe bomb that. That's Google, let's see.
Right. It's within the same.
Okay, uh, Trustee Chongly?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Motion is carried. At this time, too, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to approve a new contract with UniFirst to include everyone. And like to volunteer our two, to approve the Volvo to go with, make sure we're really that. Okay, I have a little, I'll help on that, we'll pick that up. So, I guess we just want people to do that, and I don't, the Volvo and colors, is that good? Very good. Do you have a, the motion, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All holds, motion is carried. We have one more motion we need to do. I'm not sure exactly what is required here, but I think we need to take property at 59 Oak Street off parole or at least request that the county do so, because it's taxed, it's owned by the county. So, I'm not sure exactly what kind of motion we need to do, or...
It just says that the board has to approve them taking that off the tax, because it's owned by county. That there is law before that's still on there that the county will pay, but the tax portion, they will not.
Okay, so, we need to make a motion to 59 Oak Street off that. Okay, I'll make that motion, the second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Not all in favor, just, that's loose enough property. And it's owned by the county, so it's really taxed, it's empty, somehow it ended up on a tax rule. Right.
And we could pick that in and go up there and...
Yes.
We didn't really go back to the question, like, we're talking about. The 59 Oak Street, whether we could go up there and mull that, or fresh hog it, or whatever, or...
Probably, probably bush hog it.
Yeah.
And build a challenge for our guys' time.
On, on the...
Yeah, we'll talk to guys.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All holds, motion is carried. Uh, just have one other order of business, and that is, hearing on the, oops. A hearing on the local law with the required amendments to the National Flood Insurance Program. At this time, I open up a public hearing. Does anyone have any comments? It's not real complicated, but it is required. Basically, if we do not amend our law to include the new foot, plane map, residents and businesses within our municipality will no longer be eligible for flood insurance. And you may not be eligible for certain types of grants available for premiums. So, it is a required thing. We had Dave Marshall, our attorney, draft this. And basically, it's accepting the new map from Dean. It's a lot of paper to, I don't think, about three pages. Is there any other public comment? I thought I would close the hearing. So, entertain a motion to, uh, enact the local law number two of 2007, which is the National Flood Insurance Required Regulation Amendments. Any other motion there? Second? Any discussion? Not all in favor of moving local law number two of 2007, please say aye.
Aye.
We have to do a, we'll follow this.
You want to go?
Trustee Chongly?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Southwood?
Aye.
Mayor Moore, aye. Uh, I have no further in business. Does anyone else have any further in business? Do you make, make a motion during the meeting?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in... All opposed, motion is carried, uh, any is carried?
Good, you're keeping it down to five minutes.
Me! Get out early.